Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Carr?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Sandhu is absent. Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Vice Mayor Bertani?
Here.
And Mayor Moy?
I'm here.
Thank you.
And Mr. City Manager could truly just in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. And now, we're gonna go to council reports. Councilwoman Williams, could you start, please, today?
Absolutely, Mayor. I would like to report on the May 1st North Cadilla LLMD community meeting that we had. First, I just want to thank Vice Mayor Bertani and our staff, Chris Lewis, everyone that was, all the staff that was there, prepared and ready to receive the community. I would like to thank the community members that came out that were passionately talked about the North Cadilla, the North Cadilla LLMD that did not pass. So after some spirited conversation, we figured out that we weren't quite ready to to put the North Cadilla LLMD back, by the way, and thank you for the LLC members that were there, but we're not quite ready to put that to a vote. We felt like there was work to do. We felt like this was a great, actually, start of a subcommittee. And so with that, and with that subcommittee, we would build up to be ready when we thought that we almost had a mass strategy and communication to really get this passed. Because, of course, if it doesn't pass, that would have been a negative 70,000 outside of our budget. So we are gonna start a subcommittee. And I, and if anyone is listening to my voice and wants to be a part of that subcommittee, please email me at kpwilliams@fairfield.ca.gov. And we'll put you on the subcommittee list. And that's the only thing I want to report on this time.
Thank you. That's great that you had that. And thank you, Madam Vice Mayor, for attending. And staff, I guess, was staff there? Great. Councilman, oh, always, huh? Councilman Tonison?
Thank you, Mayor. We had another big drug take-back event over the weekend at the Civic Center. It's amazing the amount of, the amount of pills that people drop off. It's literally boxes and boxes and boxes, hundreds of pounds. So it's, it's always great to do that, and it's always full. We had our farmer's market Thursday, opening day. That'll be running for the next three months, 3:00 to 7:00 on the county lawn. And as the year goes on, the different, the different fruits and vegetables begin to come out. And there's things going on downtown. The 1,200 block is almost, is almost finished. So they've, they've just started the 700 block today, which will be the last block. I know it's a little rough for people. The parking isn't the greatest, but typically, there's parking in the back. We just have to, to walk a little bit further to get to the, to your favorite businesses and restaurants. And, but we're, appreciate people hanging in there. We've gotten, you know, a few compliments, a few complaints. But I think the, the end product, I think people are gonna be pretty pleased with. So I appreciate everybody hanging in, and that's all for me, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Doug?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for... Thank everyone for taking the time to attend our council meeting tonight. There's a lot of people here tonight. Also, a reminder, District 3, we're gonna have our listening tour on the 17th. Please come out and share your concerns and inquiries. I also made it to the farmer's market a little late. My favorite bread was already sold out, but...
I bought it.
Yeah. But no, it looks like it's gonna be a good season. And also, I wanted to get some of that jalapeno cheese bread that sold out. That was, that was the one I wanted. It was good, too. Also, I went to the Junk in the Trunk event at Laurel Creek Park. It was a real good success, scored some goodies. And if anybody don't know what that is, it's for people that don't really have garages, or they might have garages, apartments, and they want to sell, like a garage sale. Every year, we put up a spot for them to do that, and it was really nice. And then after that, I stopped by the cleanup at the Powell Center. I have to confess, I didn't do any work, but I did stop by and look around, and the memory laying down the roller rink, it was, it was, it was fun. And then me and Councilmember Panduro attended the 30th anniversary literacy, literal, literacy celebration. I'm having trouble with my literacy. And lastly, if anyone would like to attend the Cap Solano JPA meeting, it's gonna be at 6:30, 601 Texas Street. This meeting, we work on putting together solutions for the homeless and house community. And that's my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Panduro, please.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. So as Doug mentioned, we did attend the 30th anniversary literacy celebration held by the Solano County Literacy Services. So it was a great event, a luncheon held downtown where, I don't think we, we take for granted that someone of us can read and write and speak well. There's a lot of folks out there that are learners, and they're learning how to do all these things, for whatever reason. And so the library has an amazing service where tutors are paired up with learners, as they call them, and they teach them how to read, write, and have conversations. And so at this celebration, it was the 30th anniversary, and so it was really neat. They actually public, they, they publish a book where everyone can submit a story, a poem, or anything they want regarding a topic. And so the topic this year, the theme was celebration. And so we read, we heard three different stories of folks who weren't either new to this country or have been here, just, but had just never had like the courage to write and speak in front of other people. And so we got to hear them speak and share their stories. So it was really neat. It was a really nice celebration to be able to honor the volunteers that give up so much of their time to other adults who are wanting to learn and improve themselves with regards to literacy. And then, yeah, the farmer's market was amazing. So if you have a chance to go check it out, we have a lot of amazing vendors, some really good cookie vendors. I know I got my fill of those that day. So, yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming out, everyone. This chamber is always a lot better with, it filled up with you here. So thank you so much. I just want to, first and foremost, thank everyone for the National Day of Prayer that we had here at City Hall on May 1st, sponsored by the Fairfield Clergy Action Network, or Fairfield Can. And we had it in the garden out there instead of in here in the chambers, and it was just a really beautiful day. We had representatives from Travis Air Force Base, First Christian Church, Salvation Army, The Vine, The Love Community, Liberty Church, Fairfield Church of Christ, Drave for Christ. And I want to thank especially the Mayor for joining our National Day of Prayer and really blessing us with not only your presence, but some very powerful words. Thank you for everybody who was a part of making that happen. We'll do it again next year, of course. And I also want to announce that the Fairfield Can, or Clergy Action Network, will be having our second Fresh Food Festival. We have these fresh food festivals around town in spots that are, for lack of a better term, food deserts, where families have a hard time getting to venues where they can buy fresh food and vegetables. So we'll be having the Fresh Food Festival on May 28th at David Weir Elementary School at 1:00. Fresh food, fresh vegetables, for free. The first one we had was fantastic, and it was just a beautiful event, and I think really well-received. So May 28th for that. And I want to thank Councilwoman Williams for running a really great LLMD meeting. Those meetings are tough, and, because people really care about the landscape lighting and maintenance districts in their neighborhoods, but you did a great job. Staff did a great job. Thank you for putting that group together and for really touching bases with, with the folks out there and leading the way on that. It was a really great job. And also on LLMDs, the Rolling Hills LLMD is going to be moving forward. We had our first neighborhood meeting last week as well, on May 1, and the, the community is fired up and ready to go. So they're ready to put in the work to get the job done. The Landscape Oversight Committee meeting, for anybody interested in anything landscaping in the city, is on May 22nd. That's the Landscape Oversight Committee at 5:00 PM at the Fairfield Operations Yard at 420 Gregory Street. And I've been invited to attend the Rodriguez High School Suicide Prevention Walk this Saturday at Rodriguez High School at 10:00 AM, and I'm cordially inviting you to attend as well. If you have a couple of minutes to come out and support the suicide prevention efforts that we're doing at Rodriguez, that would be great. And last, and certainly not least, Happy Mother's Day on Sunday for all of you beautiful, amazing mothers on this planet. Happy Mother's Day. That's all, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. We have a really fat agenda tonight, so I'm going to pass. I won't bore you with everything I've done. I haven't bored my husband with it. So I'm gonna move forward and ask the City Manager if he has a report.
No report tonight. I'll be speaking here under one of the presentations upcoming.
Thank you. And Mr. City Attorney?
No report, thank you.
And Madam Clerk?
Just one item, Madam Mayor. There is one seat open on the Planning Commission, and applications are due June 13th. If anyone's interested, please email me at cityclerk@fairfield.ca.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, I skipped over something that I just cannot believe I did, but I did it. And that was our invocation. So I'd like to invite Lieutenant Cheryl Flockhart of the Salvation Army to come up, and I'm so sorry, Lieutenant, I made you wait through all of that. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much for having me. Let's bow our heads and pray. Gracious and Almighty God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, acknowledging your sovereignty, your wisdom, and your presence among us. We thank you for the city we are privileged to serve, a community rich in diversity, potential, and promise. We thank you for the leaders gathered here tonight, for their willingness to serve, and for the trust placed in them by the people of the city. As we begin this meeting, we turn to your word for guidance. In Micah 6:8, you remind us of what you require of us, to act justly, to love mercy, and to walk humbly with our God. Let the Scripture be more than words. Let it shape the spirit and decisions of this council. Help us to act justly, to uphold fairness, truth, and equity for all our residents, especially for the vulnerable, the undeserved, and the overlooked. Help us to love mercy, to listen with compassion, to speak with kindness, and to lead with grace. May we seek to build bridges where there is division and bring hope where there is despair. And help us to walk humbly with you, acknowledging that all wisdom comes from you, that leadership is a sacred responsibility, and that our highest calling is to serve others as Christ served. Lord, we pray for your presence in this room and in every heart. We ask for unity amid diversity, courage in the face of difficult choices, and a spirit of collaboration that transcends personal differences. May each voice in this room be heard and valued, and may the needs of our community remain at the center of every conversation. We also lift up those in our city who are struggling, those without shelter, those facing injustice, and those who feel unseen. Remind us, Lord, that leadership is not only about policies and procedures, but about people, people you love. So bless this meeting, guide its outcome, and may all that is said and done here tonight be glorifying to you and contribute to the flourishing of the city of Fairfield, in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. All righty then, let's get back on track. And so, see where are we getting to? Oh, Presentations.
Okay, Presentation 1, Proclamation declaring... Okay, Presentation 1, Proclamation Declaring Public Service Recognition Week, presented by Councilmember Doug Carr to Human Resources Director Farbod Perusman.
Public Service Recognition Week, May 4th through 10th, 2025. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at a federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, healthcare professionals, and others, risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants also include workers who maintain our parks, roads, traffic control, water quality, and public buildings, as well as provide important local recreational programming and plan for the future growth of economic development for our community. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of our government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas without these public servants, at every level, continuity would be impossible in the democracy that regardly, that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now, therefore, I, Catherine Cat Moy, Mayor of the City of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim May 4th through 10th, 2025, to be Public Service Recognition Week. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and contribution to the government employees at all levels and to thank them for their service.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Today, we also celebrate our own employees in the city of Fairfield for all the wonderful work they do for this community. And I even got to have an award this year, which was very special. I've been here for about five years, and I wanted to share with the residents and stakeholders, I am as proud as I was the first day I walked in here to be the HR Director of the City of Fairfield. The dedication that the staff have to this community is bar none. I haven't witnessed it. I've been in this work for about 20 years, so I wanted to thank you all for putting your trust in us, and thank you as well.
Thank you. Our next item is Employee Recognition Ceremony. And again, our, and our presenter is our HR Director, Farbod Perusman.
Well, as I mentioned, we had our celebration tonight, today, at the Downtown Theater for our own employees for years of service, for departmental awards, and also the city manager's commendation. And I will ask the city manager to join me up here soon to make the presentation for, for our employees. In our process, we do have, city employees provide nominations to a committee, again, of city, other city employees that will review the different projects and different programs that employees have worked on, have gone, or have gone above and beyond their normal duties. And this year, just like last year, we have wonderful candidates, and we, it was a difficult choice, but the folks that I think have got the awards are very much deserving. I'll turn it over to you.
And our next item is City Manager Commendation Awards, presented by our city manager, David Gassaway.
All right, thank you. Make sure I go in the right order here. Okay, so we, every year, as Farbod mentioned, we go through a process. The committee then forwards to me those employees that they think are deserving of the city manager commendation. This year, we had three individuals that I honored with the city manager commendation, as well as one team award. So the first, the first one that I'll mention is Jessie Hernandez, who is Senior Planner in our Community Development Department. Over this last year, if council, I know remembers, you adopted our first comprehensive general plan update in just about 30 years, and you got to see quite a lot of Jessie here in these council chambers. Jessie was our lead coordinating staff on the general plan. She did an excellent job in that endeavor, and that was no easy task. It was a coordination across every single city department. It included lots of external agencies like Solano County, Airport Land Use Commission, Solano Transportation Authority, so on and so forth. Jessie handled all of that with professionalism and class, and in the end, added new, oversaw the addition of new elements we haven't had before, like environmental justice. And so Jessie is very deserving. I'm gonna go ahead and play a little video here that talks about Jessie's nomination, and then I'll invite Jessie up for an award. And no sound, of course. There we go. Thank you.
I nominated Jessie Hernandez for the City Managers Award for her excellent work on the general plan update. The general plan is not just a planning division or a community development project, it's a guide for how the city is going to grow and improve over the next 30 years. And Jessie really understood how important it was for that to be comprehensive, and she worked tirelessly to coordinate between every department, elected officials, outside stakeholders, committee, commission members, other Solano County jurisdictions, everybody who is interested, so that we could put forth a future vision for the city that benefits everybody. And I think that just speaks volumes to who Jessie is at her core. She is someone who's always advocating for the community, and she really cares about how much her work impacts others, and is just such a perfect example of what a civil servant should be. And so that's why she deserves this award so much, and I'm really proud and I'm excited to be celebrating her.
My role in the general plan update was to be the project manager. So for three years, I led an interdisciplinary team of consultants. I also led about 30 staff reviewers. I conducted meaningful community engagement, and I helped shape policies related to land use, housing, and resiliency and equity. The general plan update is meaningful to me because it was an opportunity to apply my technical expertise, but it was also a labor of love. There were opportunities to be creative, and I also got to support the community in determining its vision for the future and help lend my expertise to help the community identify ways to advance, to meet its needs, and advance goals like equity and climate resiliency. The project at times was challenging to balance with my regular responsibilities. I utilized a range of organizational methods, and I also really aimed to be flexible. So I would project out my future work and then lean into collaboration, ask for help, even say no at times, or delegate to my supporting colleagues or my consultants. This recognition is meaningful to me because it validates all of the hard work, but more than that, I view this recognition not only as individual, but a collective recognition of the hard work of my entire team and also this community who showed up and participated over four years. And so I'm grateful that the city has elevated the community's voice and staff's expertise in a meaningful way. I really enjoy working with the Planning Division, particularly because of its collaborative environment. There is so much knowledge and passion on this team, and we all are really dedicated to supporting each other every day. So I really appreciate that my colleagues are willing to drop everything to help me when I need it and to uplift me every day as well.
All right. Jessie, you wanna come on up?
Next up is Anjali Duchasse, who is our Administrative Tech Lead in the Fire Department. Beginning in 2024, Anjali stepped up and volunteered to be on the Board of Directors for the Fairfield Community Services Foundation. For a little over three decades now, the Community Services Foundation has been a nonprofit that has focused on serving underserved children in the community. Anjali dedicated many of her nights and weekends to fundraising and organizing events for the organization, as well as chaperoning youths to professional sporting events. One of the things the Community Service Foundation does is they raise money and they take youth that otherwise would probably never have an opportunity to go to professional sporting events, and they take them so that they can get that experience as a child. Anjali, her willingness to serve the community outside of her day job is certainly commendable, and I think now she is serving as Secretary on the Board here in 2025. So let me play the video for Anjali.
I'm the Fairfield Fire Administration Division Manager. I nominated Anjali for her role as the Fairfield Community Services Foundation Board Member. Last year, when Deputy Fire Chief Rob Herrick announced his retirement, Anjali immediately volunteered to step up and take his position on the board. Since then, she participated in every way possible, from chaperoning middle schoolers at late night sporting events, to sacrificing weekends at the various fundraisers. Anjali's role on the board is above and beyond her normal job responsibilities and demonstrates her genuine passion and enthusiasm for serving our community.
Hi, my name is Anjali Duchasse. I'm a Fire Admin Technician Lead with the Fire Department here with the City of Fairfield. I also sit on the Board of the Fairfield Community Services Foundation as Secretary. I was inspired to step into the role because of all the work I did at chaperoning the sporting events that they took the children on. I appreciated how they tried to cover all their bases and include all of the underserved children in the community, making sure that they felt appreciated and included, and to show them in events that can inspire them. The most meaningful part is seeing the faces, all the people that we touch when it comes to the events that we throw to raise funds in order to have all, all of the events throughout the city. It helps to see the people that actually get to benefit from it, see the joy on their face and how much they appreciate the work that we do. Well, the recognition means that I'm seen. I didn't volunteer and become a part of the Board for the recognition, but it's nice to know that you're seen and that people that you work with appreciate what you're doing. It means a lot to me, especially coming from the City of Fairfield and the city manager itself, because that means that not just people that work with me and that are at my level appreciate and see what I'm doing, but those above me see it too. What I enjoy most about serving the community and working for the City of Fairfield is seeing the positive effect it has on the community that I live in and the community that I'm raising my family in. I've lived here for the past six years, and before that, I was in the neighboring city of Vallejo. And so I feel invested in this community, and I appreciate being able to raise my granddaughter here and having my children that went to high school here as well, see the hard work that I'm putting into making the City of Fairfield better.
Anjali, come on up.
Kelly Severs is an Office Specialist in the Police Department. I can see her boys are very happy for her. So over the, about last year and a half, we transitioned payroll systems in the city. And to say the least, in, in the interface between the city's payroll software system and the timekeeping system that is very specialized and utilized in the Police Department, it did not go overly well. I'll just be very, very polite about it. And so there was lots of issues. Kelly was absolutely instrumental in helping to resolve. She, she came, she came in very solutions oriented, very calm, helped many of our Police Department folks through as there was issues with paychecks. She would go in, she would find the issue, she would explain it, she, you know, lots of MOU review, and, and really, she took initiative in identifying ways in which we needed to make modifications to the system to really solve the problems, to where today, she's really helped to foster a lot of trust, a lot more trust in that interface. Her collabor, her collaboration between the Police Department, HR, and our, our finance team was instrumental. Let me play the video now for Kelly.
I am Dan Marshall, the Chief of Police, and I nominated Police Department Assistant Kelly Severs for the City Managers Commendation. I nominated Kelly because she was instrumental in a changeover that we had with our payroll and scheduling system. With the change to Tyler Munis, the old system we had, Schedule Express, was not working. So we shifted to InTime. When we first did this, it created a lot of payroll issues, a lot of challenges. It was a new system, and obviously, there's nothing more panicky than employees not getting paid correctly or having problems. And, and Kelly really took that on. She found ways to, to fix the issues. She worked with Human Resources, with our finance team, on how to fix this problem and how to make the transition much more smooth. It took a lot of work, there was a lot of stress, and Kelly did a phenomenal job. She is just a caretaker. She takes care of our whole department and our payroll, and just does a phenomenal job.
Hi, my name is Kelly Severs. I work in the Police Department, and I've been there for about six years. I've done a few things within the Police Department. Currently, though, I oversee the financial side of the Police Department. I was pulled into the Tyler Munis and InTime payroll system kind of naturally. I've been doing payroll with the department for a couple of years, so once it became time to start that, then they pulled me in when it was appropriate, and I helped assist them to make sure the user side would go well. I would say, like any new system, the most challenging part of this whole process was myself learning the system and also trying to teach people to use it at the same time. So I was still learning some of these things as I'm trying to teach others how to use it. The most rewarding was when I finally, it clicked, and I was able to kind of configure our specific department needs within the system and Munis, and figuring out ways to make it work and seeing it actually play out. The recognition is honestly surprising. I feel like I'm just doing my job day in and day out, but it's an honor to be recognized and people see that I'm putting in a lot of work and effort into this project. I really like working for the department because there's something new or different every week. Sometimes I'm just sitting in the office doing payroll, and other days, I'm standing in the rain at 4:00 in the morning, helping with a SWAT call out. So every week is different, which I really enjoy.
Come on up.
Try as I might.
And the last City Manager Commendation is a team award, and this award is being given to our Day Team One over in the Police Department. The individuals making up Day Team One stepped up in a big way to elevate the standards of enforcement.
of enforcement, community engagement, and overall quality of service in the Police Department, particularly in the second halves of 2024. The submittal that I received for the nomination had just, I think, eight or 10 different instances of amazing things that this team has done over this past year. I'm going to highlight just one. One of the largest complaints that I know City Council, and I heard a lot from the community on over this last year was traffic safety. Last year, we had an unfortunate uptick in vehicular collisions, particularly fatal collisions, and this team really stepped up. They organized Maximum Enforcement Mondays, and what they did was they ended up focusing on high collision areas. They engaged with members of the community to find out more about areas that they should be targeting, and ultimately targeted those areas with enforcement to great effect. The members of this team include Sergeants Franco Caesar and Chris Turner, Officers Kevin Anderson, Michelle Belier, Jennifer Cruz Rios, Stephanie Dotty, Ray Hamilton, Jeremy Morgan, Dave Neal, Tony Orsi, Rolando Sanchez, and Community Services Officer Sarah Hearn. I will play the video now.
Hi, my name is Lieutenant Josh Kresch. I'm a Watch Commander with the Fairfield Police Department. The reason that I nominated Day Team One is in my 25 years of policing, I have never seen a group of officers come together that really lives the department values of safety, service, and community. Their commitment to the people of Fairfield and each other has set them apart from any other team that I've ever been a part of.
As a patrol officer in this city, it's very busy. We're tasked with a lot of different things. This team poured a lot of teamwork into their cases over the course of the year. What that allowed us to do was be able to spend more time with some of these cases and take them further than what is sometimes required for patrol officers. We had some fatalities this year involving traffic collisions. So from our administration, we got the directive to do some active enforcement throughout the city to try to slow people down, to curb some of that from occurring. Our team did some of that, but we didn't just stop there with the directive was given. We made it a point to go out and do this every week, and that snowballed into putting that stuff onto social media, which then drew the attention of our citizens. Some citizens would reach out and have some requests, and then we would go and patrol those areas for them. So it really showed the commitment that our team had, wanting to work with the community and the citizens to be able to combat a problem and then work together to have positive results.
It doesn't happen often when you get a team like this, where everyone buys into the vision of our lieutenant, but everyone just kind of buys into the vision, works together, and gets the job done. And the people that I work with are kind of almost like your family because you spend more time with them, right? And so that's, I mean, I think it's just the cohesiveness, trusting each other and working together, I think that's very important, and I think that kind of just rolls into teamwork that we have, and it's a special team. Like I say, it doesn't happen often to get something like this. Maybe a couple of times in your career you might see it, and this is one of those times it just kind of worked out.
So when we come to work, we don't do it with the expectation we're going to get recognition for what we do, but we do work hard every single day to solve our cases. Something I take pride in personally is making sure I can close out any case that I get. So it's obviously not expected, but it is appreciated to get recognition just for going out there and doing your job every single day and trying to do the best that you can.
You know, it means a lot to come into work and have that type family where we all help each other. It's just, it's a good feeling coming to work with that, and then not to mention being able to help the members of the community, because not every incident is going to be pleasant for the most part, so being able to actually help them with their cases or incidents, you know, they really do appreciate every step of effort that we make to help them out.
Congratulations.
And then, just to echo some of the words of Farbode, I've been here almost five years now, and I'm incredibly humbled and proud to work alongside the more than 600 employees in this organization that come to work every day looking to serve this community, often going above and beyond, volunteering their time nights and weekends outside of work. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. once said that life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others? And I am very proud to know that here in Fairfield, the answer to that question is lots. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It was a really nice afternoon. Councilman Tonis and I were there, so we got to enjoy the videos two times, and it was really super nice, and they deserve everything. That was said and done for them today. They're tireless. Putting up with me and maybe some of the others, I'll speak for myself, is just by itself demands a commendation. So now we're going to go ahead and move on to public comments.
Public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for the meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. To speak on an agenda item if you're online, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press *9 on your phone. Speakers are limited to three minutes per item as determined by the mayor. And our first speaker is Jeff Traeger, to be followed by John Takiuchi.
Members of City Council, Mrs. Mayor, I'd like to bring you up to date what's going on at the Downtown Theater. On the 16th through the 18th of May, Frozen Junior presented by the Missouri Street Youth Theater. And on the 24th, top-flight soul singer Dee Dee Simons, who was a finalist in the latest America's Got Talent, she'll be performing on the 24th. And you can get your tickets by going to downtowntheater.com. For these events, also next month, we have more comedy, we have another comedy show. We did very well with the last one, and the show's Sunday night with the Boina Children's Choir did extremely well, so my compliments to that. On June 6th, we're starting off this, I guess it's the fourth year of the, of taking music out to the parks again. I'm going out to six parks. The first one will be with Second Planet, and that'll be at the Vintage Green Valley. And that's what's going on here, and I wanted to tell you, Scott, that I ran into the young man that took over at Shea Soul, and I'm going to help him with his music. What a nice young man.
Art Bills.
Yeah, and that's really important because he's right around the corner from the Downtown Theater. And lastly, what happened to a Juneteenth festival? Am I getting too personal? I'd love to be able to help in the future.
We'll bring it back next year.
Yeah, we'll bring it back next year.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Next is John Takiuchi, to be followed by Tracy Nishand.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Yesterday, I went to the Solano Republican Women's Meeting, and Fire Chief John Sturdy was their speaker, and he covered the department and what they do and the resources and things like that, and I think that presentation was outstanding. It ought to be on video, it ought to be on your website. In fact, in fact, all of the departments, you know, if you had a maybe 15, 20-minute video explaining what they do, that would be terrific. And then John shifted over into wildfires, you know, and we learned a lot from the Southern California stuff. There's a suspicion that both of them, Palisades and Eaton, were caused by homeless fires. That triggered it and made it worse was the fact that they've been, you know, it's been about a year and a half of real dry weather and the Santa Ana winds. And what happens, if you've ever seen the videos of these things, the ember's going miles, you know, through the air and lighting fires in Pasadena from Altadena down there, okay? And so John touched on that, and that made me think, you know, we have similar conditions here. We're surrounded by a lot of vegetation, and if we have a dry summer, and then the winter winds come down the valley and there's a fire, we could be in deep, deep doo-doo. See, and I think, I think that, you know, everybody is responsible for their own properties. They need to, the people even in town, they need to keep their yards clear of flammable stuff, because, you know, there's no telling what would happen. And like the Southern California fires, once you get going like that, there is nothing fire departments can do. It is just absolutely out of control. It's going to burn itself out, when it reaches the ocean or whatever, see? So anyway, I really enjoyed Chief Sturdy's presentation, and like I said, I think you ought to put it on video. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John. Next is Tracy Nishand, to be followed by Terrence Strong.
Good evening, Mayor Moe, Vice Mayor Bertoni, Councilmembers, and City Staff and Community Members. Tracy Nishand, Solano County Public Health, Project Director for the Tobacco Prevention and Education Program, and public servant to Solano County for over 30 years. The American Lung Association of California has determined four policy areas that local jurisdictions can address that would provide the greatest public benefit. Smoke-free multi-unit housing, smoke-free outdoor dining, reducing the sale of tobacco products, and addressing vaping and new emerging products. With the lack of affordable housing and high rates, and many people working from home since COVID, many families, seniors, and children who are exposed to secondhand smoke amongst, against their will, do not have any recourse, cannot afford to move, and cannot find different housing. When home is not safe due to secondhand smoke, what are they to do? Most people think that what emits from an electronic smoking device is a vapor. It is actually not a vapor. It is not technically smoke. It is an aerosol. That aerosol can contain many different contaminants in it, such as heavy metals, such as nickel and tin and lead. The aerosol contains ultrafine particles that actually get deeply lodged into the lungs. The U.S. Surgeon General has concluded that there is no safe level of exposure to any type of secondhand smoke, and also has identified the people with heart conditions, asthma, and other respiratory conditions, and are groups that are such avoid, that they should avoid these types of secondhand exposure. The CDC states that secondhand smoke annually in the U.S. among adults who do not smoke results in 34,000 premature deaths from heart disease, 7,300 deaths from lung cancer, and 8,000 deaths from stroke. Infants who are exposed to secondhand smoke after birth have a significantly higher risk of sudden infant death syndrome. Cities that have implemented a smoke-free multi-unit housing ordinances have reported that local property managers say it is easier to go smoke-free when the city requires it. The handout which you have received is over 100 California jurisdictions have chosen to protect the health of their multi-unit housing residents, including Vallejo and Venetia. Finally, we know the secondhand exposure to vape, aerosol, and tobacco clearly should be avoided, not only in multi-unit housing, but also by bar and restaurant staff and other workers in outdoor environments who are forced to be exposed to these chemicals because of their jobs. From a public health perspective, we know the secondhand smoke and vape protection for, will protect residents, visitors, and workers in Fairfield. As the Program Director for Tobacco Prevention of Solano County, we stand ready to assist you in any way we can in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Terrence Strong, to be followed by Carter Anderson.
I'm going to, but I wanted to follow protocol. So good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. So something really simple, guys. Nothing hard, nothing political, just something really simple. I know that this is the greatest, one of the greatest mayors that we've ever had and the best City Council we've had in years.
Stop blowing hot air up, bro.
Mr. Gasway is one of the great managers. So really quick again, guys, this is something that I wanted to bring to everybody's attention. I am doing a love campaign, and we have partnered, my company, MV Transportation, has partnered with Meals on Wheels, and I know how dear that is to a lot of us, but these little cards that you have now, I ask, all I do is ask that you write a love letter or words of encouragement, because when we hand these out, they will go to seniors that are, you know, lonely, sitting at home getting Meals on Wheels, and just want to encourage them and be happy and be thankful. So that's all it was, just brought that to your attention and just to say, you know what, why not get the greatest folks in the world to be able to give some encouraging words to the people that we care about the most, that's our seniors, and that's pretty much what it is. So thank you, guys. Thanks for your time. I appreciate you, and I'll be off to the side, you know, waiting for you to pass them back by.
Okay. Thank you, Terrence. Next is Carter Anderson, to be followed by Milo Trejo.
Hello, Mayor and Council. It's the first time I'm doing this, but it's not going to be the last. But today, I'm here to present the opportunity for the youth out in Solano County. I want to take 25 youth, male and female, to the drag race. They have a drag night here in Sonoma, the NHRA, and they also have a program called the YES Program, where they can, they watch the video and they see all the different career opportunities and different scholarships that they do have available. It's not promoted here in Fairfield, of course, but I found the information, and I've been presenting it to the kids in the community, and I just wanted to present it to the city whole, and maybe you guys can get behind us and get this in the right hands so we can get youth career opportunities, because Sonoma's only about 25, maybe 30 minutes away from here, but, and there's good careers over there at that track, and our kids don't get exposure to it, and I just want to give them a hands-on experience so they can see for themselves, underprivileged kids, I mean, kids, young men and women who just undecided yet and looking for opportunities, and who's going to turn down a good night of drag racing.
I like it. You know, I'm gonna, Carter, when you're done talking, there's a gentleman right behind you. He's probably not going to like this very much. Ah, he won't care. We have a very close relationship with Jim Engelbreit, who drove a lot out at Sonoma. He was a NASCAR driver, and he's here in Fairfield and has several businesses. You might just want to swing by him, he probably has some ideas about, you know, how to get things rolling. He was born and raised here.
Okay.
He's right back there, standing next to his beautiful wife, who went to kindergarten with me, the boss. Yeah, so you can talk to them, but I appreciate this too, and I'd be glad to talk to more about it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay?
Thank you. Y'all have a blessing.
God bless you.
Might be good for you. Our Powell Center to have this posted as well.
Yes.
So we could, we could have, say a few words.
Our next speaker is Milo Trejo, to be followed by Kalen or Salem Kelly.
Hello, my name is Milo Trejo, and I am a senior at Vanden High. I've been a part of youth tobacco advocacy, policy, and prevention for over three and a half years now, and I'm also active in my school's Friday Night Live chapter. On any given day, I can walk into one of the nine bathrooms on my high school's campus and find the group of students vaping, and there's many And there's many factors that come into play, such as peer pressure or the fact that despite Senate Bill 973 being passed over two years ago, there's multiple vendors in our state and county still selling flavored tobacco. But most importantly, it's tobacco industry saturating teen media with pro-vape content and working overtime with a budget of over one billion dollars to make sure that today's youth don't quit smoking anytime soon. It often seems hopeless, but the beginning to ending big tobacco all comes down to local policy and making sure that our community is doing our part to enforce the policies that we've worked so hard to implement. Just last month, we met with a member of you who advised we share our hopes to establish a tobacco retail license with the rest of the council, something that will be much appreciated and we hope you will consider to help us fight. Lastly, I'd like to thank Mayor Moy and the other council members who have responded to our request to meet. We look forward to speaking with you in the future, and thank you for your time.
We'll see you on Saturday.
Next, Salen Kelly? Is it Salen or Kalen? Kalen, okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kalen Kelly, and I am the Program Director for a tobacco prevention organization that works right here in Solano County. I also chair a bunch of early care and education boards more than I care to remember. I also operate a multimillion-dollar clothing apparel company. But let me tell you where I was when I was sixteen. I was addicted to menthol cigarettes. I was addicted to nicotine. I grew up in Bayview-Hunters Point over in San Francisco, and it's an area that's saturated with anything you can imagine that has nothing to do with progressiveness and youth academic trajectory. I grew up in a household, public housing, a mother raising five kids on her own, virtually no protection to any of these outside entities. Many of our youth are growing up in Solano County with the same type of conditions that I grew up in. It's incumbent upon us to provide some sort of protection against the hundreds of millions of dollars that the tobacco companies spend on predatory marketing towards our youth. All of our youth have the potential to do what I've done and even more. We have such a great opportunity to let our youth know that we stand behind them so that they can achieve whatever their mind sets them to. But we also have an opportunity to let the tobacco corporations know that they cannot have our youth. Our youth are ours. They belong to the community, and they belong to the future. And so I'm working along with Tobacco-Free Solano, Tracy Nishan, and a couple of other organizations. We want to invite you to work with us to work on a comprehensive tobacco retail license to continue protecting our youth from pedator, uh, from predatory tobacco marketing campaigns and continue to make Solano County the best county in California.
Thank you, sir.
Did anyone else wish to speak on public comment? Okay, there are no hands raised online, Mayor.
All right, Madam Clerk, then let's go ahead and move on to the consent calendar.
Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the city council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And I don't have any cards. Did anyone wish to speak on any of the consent calendar items? No?
Colleagues, does anybody want to remove anything from consent or discuss it? If not, I will accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye, and that was unanimous. And now, we're going to go ahead and move on to new business.
New Business L1, Resolution 2025-70, Adopting the Public Utility Master Plan. Adopting the Completed Comprehensive Water System Plan that will serve as a guidance document for near-term investment and long-term planning. And our presenter is Michael Heather, Assistant Public Works Director of Utilities.
All right. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. This item before you tonight seeks to establish a resolution adopting the Fairfield Municipal Utilities Water Master Plan, which will serve as a guidance document for decision-making on near-term investment and long-term system planning. To date, we've had some condition assessments of select facilities, but we have not yet had a comprehensive master plan that considered the entirety of our system, which spans treatment, storage, and distribution assets. As a reminder, the goal of this effort was to establish a comprehensive planning document that was to be used to inform a cost-of-service analysis and recommendation of the new rate schedule. So tonight's presentation seeks to provide answers to the following questions. First, I'll briefly describe our water system assets at a very high level. Second, I'll give a summary of what the Public Utility Master Plan is, or PUMP, as we've branded it, and what it seeks to achieve. Next, I'll quickly describe the value of having a master plan, especially one that is as comprehensive as ours. Next, I'll point out what is different about our master plan, and finally, I'll summarize our next steps. So before we get into the meat of the presentation, I just did want to, there, this was a multidisciplinary team across several technical, non-technical workgroups, both inside and outside the city. These are just many of the city staff that worked, dedicated their knowledge and time to make this document useful for the future. So for all intents and purposes, our water system has three major components, which consist of treatment, storage, and conveyance. We have two treatment plants that produce potable water that is moved through a distribution network of nearly four hundred miles, of pipelines, fifteen pump stations, and a dozen storage facilities. The distribution network also contains over thirty-three thousand water services to customer meters, which serve as the interface between the city and the customer. So understand, the current system was a first step in developing PUMP, which involved collecting information on existing facilities and operations as well as capturing institutional knowledge from staff. In order to ensure a water system is future-oriented and designed properly, we must understand population growth and development patterns. And, and as it should, a forward-looking master plan will help you identify and prepare for future needs well before they arise. We also had to develop a future water demand projections, which were based on estimated population growth, growth rates, and development patterns. So we've timed our effort to include these in PUMP, which were based on the recent efforts to update the general plan. We also conducted an evaluation of current and upcoming regulations and policies that could require major changes to our operation in order to maintain compliance. We're also leveraging our data assessment of the existing system to help define and prioritize needed improvements to the water systems, along with the best estimate of associated costs to develop capital improvement programs. So growing systems require numerous ongoing improvements, and deciding which to pursue first is challenging. PUMP provides a framework for decisions about capital improvement priorities, financial policies, and how capital improvement should be funded. A master plan also prioritizes future projects by helping us allocate resources to ones that will make the most difference. PUMP includes an evaluation of the need for new backbone water facilities to serve build out of the city's general plan. And a master plan helps to accelerate future work because it will already contain a baseline of necessary information. PUMP includes identification of project descriptions, estimates, and technical data to facilitate the design process. And finally, a master plan summarizes system-wide plans and information pertinent to many stakeholders. PUMP is expected to be a framework for future decision-making about capital improvements, policies, and funding. So oftentimes, different planning and guidance document updates occur at different times and cadences, but in our case, PUMP was coordinated to harmonize with the general plan update, which may not have been apparent. So in other words, the planning horizon for both the general plan and PUMP was by design. Well-written master plans usually contain condition assessments, but in our case, PUMP goes a step further in viewing our system holistically to create the framework for next-step decision-making. PUMP also includes, includes an evaluation of criticality, likelihood of failure, consequence of failure, and business risk exposure so that limited resources can fund the right projects at the right time. So what are our next steps? Hopefully, the, you adopt PUMP and complete the financial analysis that includes the cost-of-service and rate study. We intend to publish the master plan, assuming it's adopted on our website, and we'll resume an education campaign for conducting coordinated public outreach. We'll complete and update, adopt updates to our codes, regulations, and policy documents that include the Fairfield Municipal Code, the Fairfield Municipal Utility Administration Regulations, as well as other policy-related documents. These will help guide future behaviors for the Fairfield Municipal Utility. We'll also schedule next steps for adopting the cost-of-service and rate study at a future meeting. And with that,
All right.
Pause for here for any questions.
Okay, first, I'd like to see if there are any public speakers on this.
I don't have any cards for L1. Did anyone wish to speak on this item? There are no hands raised online.
Okay, colleagues, any questions here? I guess we have no questions, sir, you are thorough. I love that. I just want to say to you, Michael Heather, I work with him pretty closely because of Solano County Water Agency, and he, he helps me a lot. He's, he's really good. Anyway, he's very good, he knows what he's, yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Thank you. You save my bacon about every other day. I will entertain a motion.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that was unanimous. And so now, thank you, Michael. Now we're going to move on to item L2, please.
Item L2, Introduction of City of Fairfield General Purpose Transaction and Use Tax, Sales Tax Rate Increase. And our presenter is Savita Chodary, Assistant City Manager and IT Director.
Today, I'm going to talk about a potential sales tax measure. So we started discussing at the council retreat back in January twenty-four, twenty-fifth. We participated in a strategic planning session, and we discussed various structural budget deficit with the expenses which are exceeding our revenues. And then we had a budget study session on March eleventh, followed by another study session on April eighth, discussing our budget situation. So I want to highlight a few efforts that we have completed as an organization to reduce our expenditures and increase the revenues. In the past couple of years, we have frozen about twenty-four point five possessions, reduced our general fund budget by three point seven seven percent, and took various efforts to increase the revenue, such as passing on the credit card processing fees, did the two tax measures on business license tax and transient occupancy tax, as well as updated our user fees, which all resulted in covering some of our deficit and reduced it from twenty-one million dollars to ten million dollars. At the last session, we had presented the austerity options, and the items that are highlighted in green were approved by the council to proceed with the reductions, further reductions. And we were directed to take a look at what it would be for the City of Fairfield to take a sales tax measure. So a little bit background, our Measure P was approved by our voters in 2012 with a one percent sales tax, which was approved for five years. There was an ordinance, 2012-20, that was established as a result. In 2013, a Measure P committee was formed. In 2016, our voters again approved the extension of Measure P through March 31st, 2033. In 2017, we established another ordinance which enacted the sales tax extension and also extended the terms of the office for the Measure P committee. Currently, our Measure P is scheduled to be sunset on 2033. So we did some research with our neighboring jurisdictions. Most recent sales tax increases in Solano County in November 2024, four of the seven cities in Solano County increased their sales tax. And this table describes their old rate versus the new rate. For example, Venetia went up by about point five percent. Dixon went up by one percent. Rio Vista, one percent, and Sausal City by point seven five percent. Again, comparing to all of the seven cities, Fairfield is in the bottom three currently for our sales tax. We are at eight point three seven five percent. Also, AB, Assembly Bill 3259 was recently passed about a year ago, which increased the sales tax limit for Solano County to nine point seven five. Venetia is the only one that is highest right now, closer to nine point seven five. Vallejo is at nine point two, and again, Sausal and Rio Vista at nine point one two five. And these all, the percentages went into effect on April 1st, 2025. So we went ahead and looked at what is it, the impact of the sales tax measure would be for City of Fairfield. So we evaluated different percent increases. For example, if we were to go, currently, we receive about twenty-four million dollars with our current Measure P, and our sales tax rate is eight point three seven five. So if we go up by one fourth cent, it is about point two five percent. It will result into additional revenue of six million dollars. So for every one fourth cent, it goes up by about six million dollars. Here's another chart, which kind of does the projections for the future all the way through fiscal year 33, if we were to do various increases on different cent percentages for our sales tax. And these, the potential locally enacted, this is projected to generate anywhere between twelve million annually to one-half cent increase to twenty-four million for one cent increase for the City of Fairfield. We also reached out to the Solano County Register of Voters, and we, we have about sixty-five thousand seven hundred twenty-eight registered voters for City of Fairfield. And the cost to do a ballot measure during a general election is about five dollars per voter. A primary election is about seven dollars, and a special election is fifteen dollars. Because during the general election, cities already participating, because council members or the mayor, they are due for their term renewals. So as a result, our cost is reduced to point five zero, or fifty cents, per voter. So as a result, if we were to put this ballot measure as part of a general election, city overall would save almost three hundred thousand dollars. Instead of paying three hundred twenty-eight thousand, we would be paying thirty-two thousand to run the ballot measure. In addition, the next four slides are kind of talking about the direction, but I do want to preface that with, we are just providing options today. We really don't need decision-making today because we can always release an RFP, do the voter survey, the polling, and we can bring back the results to council, and then we can decide on these four items that we're going to talk about today. So the first one is general sales versus special sales tax. General sales would result into fifty plus one voter approval versus special sales tax is two-thirds. Currently, our Measure P is a general sales tax. Again, the second direction point that we will be looking for in future would be what percent should we go up by, ranging from one-fourth cent to one cent. One-fourth cent will result into six million dollar revenue, which will not really address our deficit, and one cent will result into twenty-four million. The next direction we would be looking at would be to pick the election day, June versus November. Again, June would be considered primary, which might result into higher costs for the city, over four hundred thousand dollars, compared to the November 2026 general election, which would cost us about thirty-two thousand. And last but not the least, we will also have to consider, our current Measure P is going to sunset in 2033. Do we plan to combine and the sales tax and remove the sunset? Or do we want to take the sunset as a separate measure in future? In addition to that, we also would like to go and get direction from council if we are ready to issue an RFP to select a consultant for public outreach, for voter survey and polling. And we would also recommend to form like a subcommittee of, you know, two or three council members who can then help us with our consultant selection as part of this process. And with this, I'm open for any questions.
Thank you, Savita. Have any public speakers on this?
Yes, John Takiuchi to be followed by Steve Vancil.
Mayor, council members. At your January retreat, Finance Director John Fardato told you that he, the budget was being balanced by transferring money from the reserves. That should have been a red flag. He repeated that at your last update, and you've- He repeated that at your last update, and you finally agreed to let the staff kind of maybe work on a tax, and that's what we have tonight. Staff told you that you have a revenue problem. I'm here to tell you, you don't have a revenue problem. You have a spending problem. Our taxpayer group will oppose any sales tax unless it's accompanied by a real effort to cut spending. You've been nibbling at the edges, you've been picking at the low fruit, and there are really things that can go. When I was younger, we used to say, if I was king, you know, we didn't like something government was doing. I'm sure you've all done the same thing. Well, if I was king, I'd tell staff, go to zero base budgeting, zero base budgeting. Find out what you legally have to fund and fund that. If there's any money left, you can pick something else that you think is important, fund that. When the money's gone, stop. If the funding, the important stuff or the required stuff leaves you short, you're going to have to make cuts. Don't leave it up to staff. You're going to have to make cuts. That's leadership. Any tax increase hurts families, lower-income families, retired people on fixed incomes. It hurts them a lot. We expect you to do, you know, to take care of people, not just keep government going.
Thank you, John.
Next is Steve Vansel.
Thank you. As many of you know, I am on the Measure P committee, but this issue hasn't come to our committee yet, so I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. But I do have some things I wanted to bring up. I want to thank very much Mr. Tsuguchi for talking to us. He does engage with our committee quite a bit, and we are a public committee.
Yes.
So, we're very happy to have anybody come to our meetings. Savita, I want to thank you also for a very nice presentation. I wanted to go over a few things, maybe to help color the decision a bit. We have a structural deficit. Why do we have a structural deficit? I think there are three reasons. One is inflation. One is a growing pension liability obligation. And the third is growth of the city and employees. I'll talk about that first. Before the Great Recession, we had 609 full-time employees. We'd take drastic measures when we had the recession, and they also took away our redevelopment agency funds. We dropped down to 502. That's a 17% decrease of people. We laid a lot of people off. We also had the employees, many of them had 10% of their hours cut. After Measure P, we've gradually increased. I saw at one point, we're 619, but we've frozen some positions, so we're probably actually now back below the 609 peak that we had before the Great Recession. So, we have taken some measure. That being said, our city has gained 15,000 people since that time. That's, we're a very spread-out city. That's more work for the police, for the fire, and for public works that they have to do. There's more roads to maintain, there's more structures, residences, more people to answer calls to. So, that has grown, and our general plan we just saw is going to keep us growing. We're going to keep getting more spread out. Inflation, that of course, has started when we first had inflation, the prices went up, so we got a little more revenue. So, at first, it looked kind of good. But just like our households here, our bills went up. So, just like our households are struggling to pay their bills because their income hasn't come up, the same thing has happened to us now, too. And the other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit is pension obligation. So, when Measure P started in 2013, that particular year, we had about a $14 million gap in pension. That has increased to grow. Right now, this year, it'll probably be about $34 million. So, we've got almost $20 more million of pension. That's part of our structural deficit. That's continued to increase, but the good news is about 2031, it reaches a peak at around $41 million, so about another $7 million more to go. And then, it starts dropping down. I would like to say that it drops off at the same rate it went up. It does clearly drop down, but it's not quite as ramped down as it ramped up.
Yeah, about 15 seconds.
Yeah, if I have a chance for one more time, I'd appreciate it. So, those are the things that we're dealing with. The rate, I think, is important to consider. When we first did Measure P, we went to 1%. Our neighbors went lower, so they had to go back to this. So, I think it's very important to consider what rate you consider, so that's one of them. But we have a couple of cities that will stay below us if we do raise it, and for big-ticket items, that is an issue, because they can buy the same, you know, it's like a 1% cash back if we're 1% higher.
Steve, would you mind, this is terrible homework after... Could you write this all down?
Yeah, I'll be happy to.
And give it to all of us to look at?
I'll be very happy to that.
Because nobody teaches like you. I know this, because you're an appointee, and I get it. So, could you do that? Because I've got to keep this tight, because we have a lot of people talking tonight.
Okay, we'll do it. Okay, I appreciate it. So, I would say, consider the term also very carefully. Where you decide to sunset it, you could extend it as well as sunset, or, so that's something else to consider, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Steve.
Did anyone else wish to speak on this item? And there are no hands raised online, Mayor.
All right, thank you. So, now, it's back to us colleagues. To any comments or questions right now?
Yeah.
Yes?
So, Savita, head up there, I think it's on page 11. Yes. What reason would we do a special tax?
So, if we were to go out for a tax and say, the money that would be raised through this tax measure would be only spent on infrastructure or only spent on road, then that's considered special tax. Versus if it comes into a general fund and we decide how we distribute it to different programs and projects, then it's considered general tax.
So, you're just showing that, we're not suggesting that we would do a special tax, though?
No. I mean, staff recommendation would be to do a general sales tax, but again, we would go to the voters, get the polling, and then come back to council with the recommendation, again.
I'm on record as saying I favor a tax increase, so I haven't come off of that. We've cut a lot, you know. If we cut parks and rec and things like that, what does it do for the community? I think that we are, we're in line with the rest of the county. I think, you know, the reasoning behind it, we've done everything that we can, that we feel that we can. I know, Mr. Takayuchi, you think, you know, we could cut deeper, and that's, you know, possibly we could, but I would be supporting doing... I don't know what number you guys are going to talk about yet, and I'm sure we'll get to that.
Would you like to be on the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you want two for a subcommittee? We'll start with doing that.
We can do it with... How about with three, because then if somebody misses?
Well, we can do three without violating the Brown Act.
Yeah.
Who else would like to? Councilwoman Pandora, yes?
I would. I mean, just because I know myself and Councilwoman Williams sat in on the last, not the TOT and the...
Business license.
The business license, thank you. And I think that it would be, just coming off of that experience, just so recently, it would be, I wouldn't mind assisting with this one either.
That's great. Councilwoman Williams, would you like to join them?
Absolutely.
All right, so it's those three, then, that I'd like to appoint to the subcommittee to work with staff. I did it in the, with John Maraz in the first round, and it is... It's a lot, and good luck to you. Godspeed. So, now, what else do you need from us tonight? What kind of decisions?
So, we just need approval to proceed with the RFP to select the consultant for public outreach and polling.
That's the only other thing you need tonight?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, if there was anything that, you know, council members felt strongly about in terms of direction on any of the other items that Savita's presented on, we would certainly take that feedback now, just because that helps us to, you know, get down the path. But if you prefer just giving us direction to proceed with the, you know, public outreach consultant selection, going through that process, doing polling, sort of finding out what the appetite of the community is, and then coming back to you. If that's the direction you want to give tonight, we're happy to take that direction as well.
Okay. I have a couple of things that I want to say. First of all, Mr. City Manager, this is a question for you. You know what zero base budgeting is, right?
Yes.
How would that work in this city? Could it?
Well, zero base budgeting was phased out of the federal government back in, I think, the '70s, because it's really an impossible task. Because if you were to say zero base budget, that would entail doing something like, okay, go to the police department, police department, you get zero, and then you start working up from there. And so, in order to do that type of process, particularly at the local government level, it would take, I mean, it would probably take us at least a year and have to be a very comprehensive community engagement process to find out, okay, what are the priorities for the community? Because at the end of the day, I think what we've shown you already is that it is a structural deficit. So, you know, council can give direction however we want to go, but the reality is, is the level of service across the different services, the Department of Services that this organization provides to the community right now, you do not have enough revenue to continue to provide that level of service. So, at the end of the day, even if you do zero base budgeting, you're going to get to a point where something is cut, and that would need to be a council-driven process or a community-driven process to identify what is it that we're doing now that the community no longer wants us to do.
Okay. And thank you for that. I just wanted everybody to hear that on the record. And the other thing that I want to say is that when I worked as a subcommittee on Measure P, I and, I convinced John Maraz that it should be a 1 cent. We got pushed back from colleagues at first, and I think staff talked to them about that. I'm glad we did that. But at the time, I believed that we wouldn't be coming back and asking for more money. And so, this, I'm going to be honest, it bothers me a little bit. It bothers me because that happened in 2012, and so, that's been 13 years. And I did ask John Fertato, so what is going to stop us from coming back in 13 years again? And saying, let's raise taxes again. When does it stop, is my question? And nobody has a crystal ball, so we don't know. Inflation, the last four years, was off the hook, and we have inflation every year. So, our employees are going to continue to need to have colas, and, you know, as Mr. Takayuchi said, a sales tax, who does it hurt most? Poor people. That's who it hurts. And it also hurts people on fixed incomes. And so, I worry about that. But on the other hand, I have to say this. I've talked this over with my husband. Not that that matters. I guess it does these citizens, so... The thing that makes me feel better about doing this at this time is that we're not imposing the tax. We're asking people, do they want to impose the tax? Because I, you know, I would not vote to do that. I would not vote to impose a tax. I wouldn't do it. But we allow the electorate to do it. That makes it okay. And the other part is, is that we get to keep it. We don't have to give any part of this away. Maybe you could explain that a little better than that, Savita.
Yes, so if this measure were to be passed, the state doesn't get to take the money. It is 100% of the revenues will come to the city. And then, based on this chart, initial recommendation of staff will be to look around 3/4th cent, not 1 cent, because that puts a, you know, not to exceed the average of the region, as well as it's a little bit more than our structural deficit that will allow us to maybe add some more community programs and projects that we can then give back to the community as well.
Yeah, and I don't think, when I think about us, I don't think that we have squeezed the full breadth, width of money that we can bring in. I don't think we're going to get to that spot, but I think that we can get to a spot where, you know, we can, you know, afford a few more things or save some more money. One thing is that we have, even though we did use some of, actually, we used one-time money. It wasn't from our savings account, right? One-time money?
For balancing the budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, we've been using one-time funds.
Right, so we haven't, just, Mr. Takayuchi, we haven't gotten into that, and we keep our little hands off of it. And I'm proud of us for that. It's important. So, anyway, I just needed to say that, because I worry very much about the future, you know, after we're all not here, I mean, not here, I don't mean not here, although for me, it would be not here. But anyway, what I'm saying is, I want our kids and our grandkids to be okay, and the grandkids of the folks out there. And I don't want us to keep raising taxes and hurting poor people, you know? And but, we're not raising the taxes, we're letting people know that, you know, you can do that. This number scared me that Steve talked about, and I know we've heard it before, but tonight, my jaw dropped. So, when we got Measure P, we were $14 million in the hole with our, you know, employees' benefits, and now, we're at $34 million?
That's the Calpers.
Yeah, Calpers. Wow, okay. It ain't good. That's just not good. So, I think we need to keep looking at all that. Anyway, thank you to the three who are going to serve on the subcommittee. Staff will work on that. And now, let's go ahead, and does anybody have questions about hiring? Yeah, yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. It wasn't about hiring. I just wanted to weigh in. You know, it took us a while to get to this point where we were talking about sales tax. You know, I'm concerned, too, because, you know, I believe, you know, tough times are coming ahead of us. But what makes me feel comfortable is we asked ourselves to make the first cut. And to cut a budget by $10 million, that is something, that is a feat, and that's something that these employees did. You know, they really looked inside of the infrastructure of the organization, saw what doesn't make sense. I can tell they looked at, you know, proposals and contracts. I know of at least one that was cut, and I bet there was much more. You know, I just feel like we've done the hard work. I don't want us to cut so much that it stops our ability to, on an economic development front, to attract other businesses, retain businesses, attract people. So, even though, you know, I absolutely want to move forward, I feel comfortable in doing that, because we started inside our own house. So, anyway, I just wanted to say that I do like the RFP process. I love that we're involved in it, because I think, well, what I do want to do is make sure there's a polling process, so we can, you know, get a temperature check, you know, of our residents. Are they with us, are they not? So, I do want to know, and I'm glad to put in the, to help put in the lift to move this forward.
I appreciate that. Yes, Councilwoman Pandora?
I was just going to add, you know, it is a concern. I mean, I, when you talk about how taxes are going to impact the low-income community, and these are the taxes that affect those individuals, but at the same time, it's almost like a double-edged sword, because if we don't, if we don't do something different, if we don't look at this, if services are, do continue to be cut, it is the swimming pool, it is the music in the park, which is already getting cut, it is these services that provide spaces for... spaces for our community to come together, for the low-income community to get resources that they need. And so it's which, they're gonna get impacted, right? And so, um, I think it's, but also being, keeping that in mind when we're doing this, and being as transparent as possible, and including them as much as possible. And also, um, you know, I think that being that several of the cities around us had to do this just recently, it allows us to kind of look at kind of what, how they approached what their level of engagement was, and just maybe tweak it and see how that maybe can work better for us or whatever, but, um, yeah, I'm happy to help.
I appreciate that too, Councilwoman Pandora. It's, it's, uh, yeah, I, I, it's, it's tough work, but you guys, you guys are good. You'll get her done. I know.
Yes. Um, well, here's my one cent worth.
One cent?
Uh, we can learn, like, uh, Councilperson Pandora said, from, you know, the pluses and minuses of the mistakes of the other cities that have already done it. So I think, I just want to thank them for stepping up for that committee, and I think that that's a
Yes.
a good thing for that. And you said something earlier that's, um, you know, in thirteen years, when is it gonna end?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think ever.
So we're gonna get to a point where we're like at forty percent sales tax?
I, I just, I, I don't know. It's, I remember when it was, you know, four cents on the dollar.
By my casket now. No.
Yeah. I, I, I don't think taxes are ever gonna stop, but, uh, that's just, just what I was getting out of that, is that it, we, we do have to, um, weigh the, all the, all, all of the options, and, um, what's best overall for the city.
Yeah.
And I think that, that's what we're gonna do, 'cause, um, especially with the wonderful committee that just stepped up. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, uh, thank you for a great report, and, you know, part of the Measure P process that we went through, and part of the reason that that succeeded is because I think we successfully explained the situation to our residents in a way that they can understand that we're not just saying, boom, another tax. That's not what we're doing here. I mean, we've gone through the five percent across-the-board department cuts, and that, those are, those are serious cuts, and it made a serious dent, like you said, ten million dollars. We are addressing the unfunded pension liability situation. If I remember, Mr. City Manager, there's a pool for this unfunded liability, that we're not doing that anymore?
Um, no, I think you're referring to general liability insurance.
Yes, general liabilities.
Where we pool risk in that.
Yeah.
So in, in CalPERS, um, over time, um, our pension liability will go back down as, um, the number of classic CalPERS members start to retire out, and as the amortization period starts to extend. So anytime CalPERS has losses on the investment portfolio,
Mm-hmm.
um, then what they do is they take those losses, they amortize it in over a fifteen- or twenty-year period where you're gonna pay an additional amount to make up for those losses over the long term. And so it's around twenty thirty, twenty thirty-one where we, where we project that our pension liability will peak, and after that point in time, then, the percentage of payroll that we pay in as an employer in, into those pensions, uh, will start to go down over time.
Yeah, and so the point is just that, you know, it's not a, it's not an unending escalation of that thirty-four million dollars that's gonna go up even more. At some point, the trajectory is that
Correct.
it's gonna go down, and so that's gonna self-correct. And also, part of the, you know, explaining to the public is that, you know, we do have a robust economic development strategy, you know, where we are, um, David Zellers has presented a vision for the city, and the city manager and others have presented a vision for, and a strategy for increasing our revenue. And that's a super-great way to diminish the structural deficit. So it's not just boom, another tax. We do have components in the equation that are shifting, and it, it'll just be very important to, this is not a one-component equation, it's variables. And it'll just be important for us to not only explain how those variables are impacting what we're doing, you know, it's a heavy lift, and we're gonna have to work. That's what we did in Measure P. We, we had a robust effort of literally all of us, you know, uh, on the dais at the time, you remember?
Oh, I do.
Out there, walking and talking. So, um, I, I guess that's my way of saying, I mean, I think that, um, moving forward makes sense, but we just have to be mindful to tell the whole story, and not just one component of it. I trust what this city is doing. Our, our spending is not responsible, and who wants, um, less public safety? Any, any hands out there? Yeah. Who wants less fire? Any, yeah, no. So at some point, we have to say, we're Fairfield, this is who we are, this is the level of services we're gonna maintain in this city, and we're gonna have to just go about doing that. And this is a compo, a variable in the equation. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, thank you for the team that's gonna be working on this. We really appreciate it. Um, okay, uh, I will, um, how about a motion to go ahead to hire the, um, go out to RFP for a consultant on this?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, that was unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, so now, we're going on to public hearings.
Item M1, Resolution 2025-71, Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026, CDBG Annual Action Plan, Approving the Fiscal Year 2025 to 2026 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan, and Authorizing the City Manager to Execute Any and All Documents, Contracts, and Memorandum of Understanding. And our presenter is Latonya Torones, Senior Project Manager.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. My name's Latonya Torones, here before you again to talk about CDBG. Um, this time, we're bringing forward our twenty-five, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, um, annual action plan. Um, the annual action plan, um, is essentially our plan to, uh, discuss with HUD and the community about, um, what our plan is towards our five-year strategic plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Um, so for this year, this year coming up, uh, for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, it is the fourth year of our five-year consolidated plan. Um, and so, um, at, if you all may or may not remember, when we did our consolidated plan, we chose a two-year, three-year cycle. So this year, we didn't accept any new applications, uh, for CDBG funding. What we did was, we reviewed those who were already being funded, and we monitored them, and we took an insight into their projects and their plans, and, um, made sure that they were still in compliance with all of the program funding requirements, made recommendations where they were necessary and needed. Um, we met with our CDBG Advisory Committee, went over everything. We had a, we have a brand-new committee, really great, um, excited about the new members on our community, or on our committee. Um, and we re-reviewed all of those. We made sure that all of the information was made available to the public, uh, for review as part of our citizen participation plan process. So back in twenty twenty-one, as part of our strategic plan, um, the priorities for our CDBG funding, um, included public service, non-public service, fair housing services, and administration. Those were kind of like the overall priorities, um, with the goals being homelessness, youth, special needs populations, affordable housing, public facilities and infrastructure, economic development, uh, affirmatively furthering fair housing, and support of the CDBG program. So, this year's funding allocation, um, we have not yet, due to the administration and the change in the administration, we have not yet received our CDBG allocation. There is a continuing resolution at the federal level, um, and so HUD has provided guidance for us to move forward with, um, our public process for our annual action plan, to not delay our, uh, projects. Um, we assume that we will receive the same amount that we received last year, but of course, we don't know. So the, I believe the federal bu, uh, budget passed the continuing resolution in March. HUD has sixty days to provide that funding to us for the CDBG program. We anticipate that we should receive it by the end of this month, but we want to keep our processes moving forward to not further delay our, uh, sub-receipients, because they cannot produce any of their projects until they are under contract with us. So, the guidance that we have received from HUD allows us to make publicly known how we anticipate funding the projects. And because we have already funded all of these sub-receipients in the past, or over the past year, we anticipate that we will keep them at the same funding levels based upon the percentages of the actual annual allocation. Um, all of them had submitted an application in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four? Um, I'm sorry, yeah, twenty-three, twenty-four, and so, um, they had a maximum amount that they requested. So we will, we plan to keep them at the same percentage. So as you see here, for Mills on Wills, um, we plan to keep them at about six-point-three percent of the total annual allocation, which is what they receive for the current fiscal year. And we kind of do the same for all of the other sub-receipients. Um, the only ones that are, um, tad bit different would be our, um, the Public Works project. Um, so we do have sixty-five percent of our total allocation that can be utilized for non-public services. So that's everything that is not a direct service to the community. Um, and so with that, the, uh, CDBG, um, funding has, we have, we're working with Parks and Rec and the Public Works Department to support the, um, install of a new bathroom at the Lee Bell Park, um, at Lee Bell Park. Um, and so we've been working with them, and so whatever doesn't go to the administration of the program and to public service, so sixty-five percent of our annual allocation, we will use to support that particular project. Um, that project will probably take us through the end, and this funding as well will take us through the end of fiscal year, um, twenty-six, twenty-seven. So that project is kind of a multi-year project, so this funding that we're providing will support them all the way through the end of the project to get the bathroom going. Um, and, I believe that is it? All right, so we just asked, um, to hold a public hearing and to adopt a resolution to approve this funding plan for HUD. And are there any questions?
And open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers on this item?
I do not. Did anyone wish to speak about this item? And no hands raised online.
All right, I'm gonna, um, close the public hearing and go ahead and ask Councilman Tornison.
Uh, Mr. Lim, I live across the street from Lee Bell Park. Can I vote on that section of it, or?
Um, yeah, because it would be a benefit to the general community and not
Thank you.
specific to your problem.
Unless it's only your toilet.
Right.
You better take that back, bro. Okay.
Those bathrooms out there.
Anybody else have any questions? Uh, yes, Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, um, so Latonya, we're, so it's sixty, so we're, just make sure I understood correctly. So we, we need to wait sixty days to make, to confirm that we've received allocation, meaning payment, for these funds?
So generally, what happens is, we're supposed to get our federal budget from HUD, like, in October, but change in administration delays in the federal budget approvals. HUD has sixty days from the date of the federal approval to supply us with what our allocation is. Then we have, HUD is gonna give us sixty days to get all of our information into HUD. Then we have to wait another forty-five days to even get approval from HUD. So that's why we're kind of like, making sure we're staying, uh, uh, you know, in front of the game. Some people didn't get their contracts until, like, December of last year. So, yeah, we're, we're doing this process. So we should know about, from HUD, this month. This month would be like that sixty-day kind of period from the federal budget approval.
Got it. So, um, the grantees, um, are they kind of in a wait-and-see kind of hold period? They're, they're not performing right now, because we don't want them spending salaries and, and, and spending expenses, right?
Well, they're, they're still currently working on their current budget for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So this budget would be effective for twenty-five, twenty-six, so July one. Yeah, um, more than likely, though, like, they're not gonna be under contract by July one because of HUD, but, you know, by us doing this now, instead of waiting to hear from HUD, it'll be sooner rather than later for them.
Got it. And my final question is, I remember, um, uh, previous years, there were, uh, uh, reports from all the grantees, and I thought that was great, because anytime a report hits us, that means it's in the public sphere. So they can see what these grantees are out there in the community doing.
Okay.
At what point of the cycle do, do we see those performance reports?
Yes, so that is part of our CAPR, that is our end-of-year reporting. That report is due to HUD on September twenty-eighth of this year, so that will come forward in August. So that report will, uh, inform the community about what they've done for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. So I, you'll, you'll see me again in August.
You know, I do have one final comment.
Yes.
Um, you st, so, everyone already knows that, uh, um, you know, I, I write grants, um, for my own company, and I will still say that before I got here on City Council, I went to a technical support, um, uh, um, what would you call it? It was a technical support
Workshop.
workshop that you led, and it was one of the best workshops that I've ever experienced.
I will never get tired of hearing you say that.
And I'll keep saying it, 'cause it really, it still is. It still is. And I want to keep saying that, because I want our city to leverage you, other departments, you know, if they need to do, uh, community outreach and technical assistance, um, um, you, you just set, you set a goal standard, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilwoman Pandora?
Thank you for the presentation. I just, so, is there a Plan B if, say, the money allocation is not granted to us, or if it's less than, or is that a possibility that it's less or not guarant? Because I've already, we've, you know, we sit on the capsulon board, and so there was already, um, agencies that came to us for emergency loans because the HUD money hasn't, had it not come through. So at what point do we, you know, move, shift into a different direction, or look at Plan B, or?
Yeah.
What does that look like?
Um, well, the government passed a continuing resolution. So we anticipate that whatever the budget was last year will be very close to what we're gonna get for the next fiscal year. Um, one of the things that we always inform our sub-receipients when they apply for funding is that these funds are intended to leverage their other funding. And so it can't be the only funding that they have to support their programs, because it's a formula grant. We, we don't apply for it, we never know how much we're gonna get, like, HUD is just like, this is what you're getting, and that's just it, right? So it could fluctuate from year to year. Um, so I would say we don't necessarily have a Plan B, but we do anticipate with the continuing resolution that we'll be able to continue with what, what we have planned so far.
Any other questions? All right, then, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go on to the next item.
Item M2, Triennial Water System Report, twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-four on Public Health Goals. And our presenter is Michael Heather, Public Works Assistant Director of Utilities.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council members. This item before you tonight is a public hearing to receive the city's triennial report, which is a document outlining and identifying contaminants detected that exceeded either public health goals or the maximum contaminant level goals. So state legislation requires all large water systems to, to prepare a report every three years outlining contaminants that exceeded public health goals. This agenda item has no slide deck or formal presentation, but I'm gonna spend a few minutes distilling the, the report down, then we can open up the public hearing, and I'll answer any questions if you have any. The city of Fairfield is considered a large water system because we have more than ten thousand service connections. Consequently, we are required to hold a public hearing and produce a report of contaminants detected that exceeded either the public health goal or the maximum contaminant level goals. So as a reminder, public health goals are set by the state, and maximum contaminant level goals are set by the federal government. A public health goal is the lowest level that the state can mandate that is not zero. A public health goal is the lowest level that the state can mandate that is not zero. And while neither are enforceable, they do prescribe levels of contaminants that do not pose a significant health risk. Each triennial period, large water systems are required to report exceedances, which are then summarized and published in our annual consumer confidence report. Overall, the city's water quality continues to be excellent, and staff does not believe there should be any changes to any policies, procedures, or practices. This is a result of the continued capital investments made in the water system, our backflow and cross-connection program, and dedicated staff who take, who take and process and monitor thousands of samples taken every year. So, in summary, next steps will consist of opening the public hearing, receiving and responding to comments by July 1, 2025. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing.
I don't have any speaker cards. Did anyone wish to address the counsel on this matter? No? Okay.
All right, then I'm going to close the public hearing. And we don't need to vote on this, just any, any, anything, any feedback from anybody here. No feedback, team? All right, you're free to go, Michael. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And great work by everybody who's involved with this. We have the best water.
Thank you.
If I don't say so myself.
Great staff, thank you.
Yeah. Ask him, Heiser Bush. Okay. That's what I'm talking about. All right, so we're going to move on to the next item. What I'm going to do is go ahead, we need two of you to recuse. And so, you'll need to leave the building like last time. And so, I'm going to take a 10-minute break while you guys do that. I don't, do they have to say the thing?
They probably should just to be safe. I don't think they need to, but they probably should. It's just worth a break, and a break anyway.
I am going to recuse myself from the next agenda item because I received last year during the 2024 campaign, a campaign contribution of $5,000 from the Bright Spot.
All right.
And I'll be recusing for the same reasons.
All right, well, have a good time at home.
We'll be watching.
Say a prayer. Thank you. Okay, 10 minutes, okay?
Order, and we're going to move on to the next item.
Item M3, Continued Resolution 2025-37, Commercial Cannabis Authentic Fairfield LLC, Rescinding the Approved Issuance of a Commercial Cannabis Retail Business Permit to Authentic Fairfield LLC. And our presenter is Dave Zellers, Director of Community and Economic Development. Oh, that's the name on here, sorry.
Yeah, we'd already presented many months ago, and the public hearing was opened and closed. So at this point in time, it's up to the council if they're going to open, the mayor, if she's going to reopen the public hearing, or council's just going to continue deliberation.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so I'm going to reopen the public hearing, and we'll take testimony. So I'll open it up.
Okay, our first speaker is Nicole Phyllis, the Legal Counsel for Authentic Fairfield.
She gets longer because she's defending the case, but it's going to be two minutes for everybody else. Oh, 10 minutes for you? Okay, 10 minutes. Thank you, everybody, for being patient tonight. We had a lot to do. We had to give those awards out and everything. Oh, we already got into our time. Can we reset it, please? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Councilmembers, for having us here tonight. For the last six months, my client, Authentic Fairfield, also known as Stizzy, has endured a nearly endless barrage of unfounded attacks and accusations largely led by its competitors to rescind its preliminary approval. It's quite telling that the majority of organizing Authentic has come from its competitors and not local members of this community. We object respectfully to those competitors' improper efforts to influence these proceedings. These anti-competitive complaints confirm that the proposed resolution is not in the best interests of the city or its residents. If adopted, the resolution will, one, at a minimum, deprive the city of $750,000 a year in annual tax revenue; two, eliminate 50 union jobs; three, further limit safe, affordable, competitive access to cannabis in this community; and four, eliminate the promised community benefits that Authentic made in its original application. Simply put, the city will not benefit from rescission. So who does? Private interests, competitors, and ultimately, the unlicensed market. Industry experts have opined that the saturation point for cannabis retail is one retailer per 10,000 residents. For a city of Fairfield's size, the market could support over 10 retailers. Given that the city has now only three operating, it's no surprise that the competitors want to protect their massive market share. It's a windfall, and those competitors' actions are now particularly inequitable because it was Authentic who led the real parties in interest in defending this city's licensing process in litigation three years ago, the very process through which those competitors got their licenses. And now they want to cut Authentic out. The resolution before you should be denied for three reasons. One, neither Authentic nor any of its owners have violated any state or local law warranting rescission. Two, even if Authentic had violated some disclosure of its ownership, which it has not, this council has the discretion not to revoke Authentic's preliminary approval. And three, allowing Authentic to keep its preliminary approval will generate a guaranteed, and when I say guaranteed, I mean guaranteed $750,000 minimum in tax revenue for the city, 50-plus union jobs, and a sustainable tax revenue stream for the city for years to come. I will address each point briefly. In June 2021, Authentic's application, and it looks like my clock hasn't started, Authentic's application setting forth the, set forth the following owners in its original application: Brian Mitchell, Dr. Albert Mitchell, James Kim, Tony Wang, John Avedore. In February 2022, Albert Mitchell passes away. In May 2022, John Avedore leaves the company. Following those events, the remaining owners of Authentic had their equity increased proportionately by the equity returned to Authentic by Dr. Mitchell's death and Mr. Avedore's termination. Those three owners are Brian Mitchell, James Kim, and Tony Wang. Competitors allege that Authentic somehow changed its ownership five times based on documents submitted to the Department of Cannabis Control, but that's not true. Importantly, four of the five so-called "ownership changes" identified by a competitor occurred during a time period in which the ordinance on which this city now relies did not apply to Authentic. It would be unfair and unjust to revoke Authentic's preliminary approval based on acts that did not violate any state or local law at the time they were made. Moreover, each of the five alleged so-called "ownership changes" took place under laws that only applied to permatees and not preliminary approval holders. It would be particularly unfair to find that Authentic's November 2024 ownership update to the DCC violated any law because Authentic specifically contacted the DCC to address the ownership discrepancy that was raised by the city for the first time in November 2024. It is important to note, no new owners have ever been introduced on Authentic's application. The three owners that currently own Authentic were originally disclosed in their application. The purpose of those ownership change laws are to make sure that people who were not originally vetted by the city do not subsequently acquire the license without approval and vetting. That is not what happened here. The owners today were the originally approved owners in 2021. The only change is that two owners were subsequently eliminated following the death of one and the resignation of another. Now, I want to address point number two: This council has discretion not to revoke Authentic's license. The Fairfield Municipal Code 10E.111 provides, "The City Council may revoke a preliminary approval or commercial cannabis business permit for a violation of any state or local law." But the use of the word "may" as opposed to the word "shall" confirms that that ability is discretionary. There are multiple court cases cited in our briefing that explain this. Thus, even if this city does find a violation of state or local law, of which there is still no evidence, let alone a legal determination, the city need not revoke preliminary approval under the plain language of the municipal code. And the competitors know this. On April 10, 2025, Embark Fairfield was issued a Notice of Violation of Business and Professions Code 26152, a law that prohibits the advertisement of cannabis products on an advertising sign within 1,000 feet of a daycare center, school, playground, or youth center. Despite this, Embark Fairfield had erected a massive billboard on an interstate freeway next to the Spectrum Center's schools and program, a school for children with highly specialized needs, within 600 feet of that. Following the city's issuance of a notice of violation on April 10, the city declined to take any further action. That is entirely its right. But just as the city declined to take further action based on a licensed operator who is advertising in violation of state law limiting the advertisement of cannabis to children, this city certainly has the discretion not to withdraw, or revoke, or rescind Authentic's preliminary approval here. But most importantly, I want to talk with you here today about why allowing Authentic to keep its preliminary approval is in the best interest of this city. That is why you were elected, and that is what I believe you care about. Basic economic theory demonstrates that when firms have to compete for competitors, it leads to lower prices, higher-quality goods, greater variety, and more innovation. In contrast, when market power becomes too concentrated, dominant firms can use their market power to charge higher prices, offer decreased quality, and block potential competitors from entering the market. If allowed to open, Authentic expects its store will generate between $800,000 and $1 million every year. And Authentic is willing to put its money where its mouth is. Authentic is willing to guarantee, as I stand before you, and this is new, Authentic is willing to guarantee a tax, a tax payment of a minimum of $750,000 in taxable revenue regardless of initial sales, regardless of initial performance, because it is so confident in its ability to succeed in this market. This will guarantee that tax revenues from cannabis double for the city in 2026. Moreover, Authentic's opening will create at least 50 well-paying union jobs. Authentic's corporate parent, Stizzy, was recently recognized by the Napa-Solano Central Labor Council's Labor Employer of the Year of 2025, further highlighting Authentic's commitment to labor, workers, equity, and being an excellent local partner. Stizzy is a trusted partner in every city in which it operates. It owns over 45 licenses, and it regularly partners with cities to defend their processes. And that will include if any competitor sues this council or this city based on its decision here tonight. As noted in Authentic's letter, the threatened claims against this city for failure to rescind Authentic's preliminary approval are anti-competitive and legally frivolous. If anyone brings those claims, Authentic will defend the city's process just as it did in 2021 and 2022 with great success in the CCC and East of Eden cases. For all these reasons, Authentic respectfully requests that the city reject the proposed resolution, and I'm happy to address any questions that council may have, particularly regarding the guarantee of the $750,000 tax revenue.
I heard you say it twice, but I'm going to ask again on the record, and then I'm going to ask our city attorney how, if this council decides to not take this away, how do we ensure that we get the guaranteed, right, $750,000 a year at a minimum? And if you make more than that, there'll be more tax money coming.
That's correct. $750,000 is the floor. Obviously, we would not limit any tax we think we can outperform at, so we think you'll get even more money in that. But just to demonstrate our commitment to this city, we will guarantee $750,000 in tax revenue, and we're willing to enter into binding agreements with the city to do so.
Madam Mayor, what I recommend we do at this time, I'm reading that statement as an offer of settlement, and I would advise this council that we go into a closed session so I can advise you in confidence.
Right now?
Yes. Oh, well, it's up to you. I think you can continue to take public comment if you like, then close public comment, and then I would advise that we clear the room, we either adjourn to a place to go into closed session, or we clear the room and go into closed session. Up to you.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're clear, the process is for me. So you think that we should not vote one way or another and then say settle, or talk settlement in closed session, and then have a vote? Is that what you're saying?
That is clearly within the council's sound discretion, however they want to proceed. I have heard what I believe to be a settlement offer, and I'd like to advise my client on what I think I've heard. I'm still processing it as well, and to be, I would advise we go into closed session before you make a decision, but that again, if a council member wants to make a motion to vote on this, that's your discretion. I'm just advising that I think it would be beneficial to go into closed session to advise you to make sure you understand what has been put on the table, as far as I understand it, because again, I'm still processing.
You're still processing.
I'm happy to also address, we've vetted the legality of this proposal, so to the extent that council has any concerns about the legality of it, I'm happy to speak to that, happy to speak to it in public session. But most importantly, we're happy to memorialize anything that needs to be memorialized. We're committed to working in this community, and we're committed to raising funds for this community.
Well, I know that it's true that anybody could give, I'm not saying anybody has it, but anybody could give $750,000 to the city because we're basically a nonprofit. Government is. Okay, so I don't think there's a question about whether it's legal or not. It's about, I think I need to know whether that's something that we could enforce.
Sure.
So I think we should go into a closed session. Microphone?
Sorry. So we would not hear the public, we would not hear everything else, and then go into closed session?
We could go ahead and get all the public testimony and then go into closed session. That's possible.
I would like to hear the public comment.
Okay, we're going to finish with, going to go along with my colleagues on this because $750,000, we were just talking about tax? I mean, okay. I mean, I'm not that stupid, anyway.
Sure, and the other thing, to the extent that you are trying to consider a complete and total settlement, please also consider our commitment that we will defend alongside the city any litigation that would follow from, one, entering into this settlement, or, two, not taking any action to rescind a license. So there's, in addition to the taxable revenue, there's that commitment as well.
Very good. I appreciate it. That's quite out of the left field. Okay, thank you.
Our first speaker is Alitha Jones, to be followed by Angelina Rojas.
Good evening, honorable.
Two minutes, yeah.
Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Alitha Jones. I work as an assistant manager at Stizzy Pacheco by way of the Sassoon City location. That's where I started my journey with Stizzy. I worked for the company for three-plus years. I'm a Fairfield resident, and I've lived, I live in the Dover Park neighborhood, and I've lived in Fairfield for about 18-plus years. I'm here tonight to support Authentic Fairfield. Working at Stizzy has positively impacted my life by teaching me to have compassion and empathy for people. Not that I didn't have it before, but working for the company has shown me that there's more to it than just people wanting to get high. Some people need it due to mental illness, or physical pain, or maybe just emotional stress, or just to feel better at the end of a long, hard day. As an employee of Stizzy, I have seen the benefits of having a Stizzy store in the community. We have volunteered in cleanup efforts around Fairfield, Sassoon area, and also catered to the needs of veterans in the area. And not only would having another location be convenient, but it would be an affordable and safe way to get the medicine vets in the area need. You can walk into a Stizzy location and know that you'll be greeted with respect and heard when it comes to what you're looking for. Allowing Authentic Fairfield to open will greatly benefit the city and will have a positive impact on the community, creating more jobs, attracting more visitors, leading to an increase in local spending, as well as having another location with the best prices in town. After all, Stizzy is branded for the people, by the people, so why not give the people what they want? Authentic understands the deadline to open by the end of the year, and we have come this far in the process. Please give us the opportunity to open. I respectfully ask you to reject the resolution and allow Fairfield to move forward and open. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next is Angelina Rojas, to be followed by Josh Lewis.
Hey, everybody. Good evening. My name is Angelina Santos-Rojas, and I am an assistant manager at Stizzy Sassoon, but I am also a longtime Fairfield resident. I have been working with the company at this location for over three years now, and since joining the team, I have been able to grow my family as well as begin a successful career for myself. From growing up in our local shelters such as Heather House and Mission Solano, I have never thought of being able to have the things or the stability that I have now. So thank you, Stizzy, and the city of Fairfield and Sassoon for making this all possible. I love seeing how Stizzy brings us all together to one location with something we all have in common. Seeing and getting a chance to meet and talk to all the different people in our community has been one of my greatest adventures yet, but also getting to grow with my team and see how they maneuver through our town as well. Opening Authentic Fairfield will allow others to create their own form of stability here in a place we all like to call home. Stizzy offers higher-paying, unionized jobs, which I've never had, so proud, provides health and vision benefits not only to its employees, but extends its benefits to our families as well. I would like to thank you, honorable councilmen and women, for your time and consideration. I again respectfully ask you to reject the resolution and allow Authentic Fairfield to move forward and open. Please keep in mind, we remain to have the lowest prices in town, keeping all cannabis needs affordable for our community. Again, thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Josh Lewis, to be followed by Alfredo Delgado.
I didn't realize this moved up and down, so I'm thinking about doing that.
It can, just wanted to come up.
I think we're okay, but good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. You know, I'm here tonight to underscore a really simple point. The first, want to say thank you. Thank you for your deliberate and thoughtful approach to settling this question of utmost importance to Fairfield's local cannabis industry. But unfortunately, over the past six months, this process has been marred by misrepresentation and a pattern of deception. Multiple times over the past six months, representatives of Authentic Fairfield came before this body and alleged that there were no changes in ownership made since they were granted their preliminary approval. The Public Records Act requests that both Embark and the city of Fairfield submitted clearly demonstrate that that is not the case. There were five separate changes of ownership amounting to over 88.5% of the ownership stake of the company. They appeared before this body, and they lied. They lied to all of you. They represented that their ownership had not changed when it had. When called out on this, when it became apparent, according to the DCC's accurate public records of the current state of Authentic Fairfield's ownership at the time, they sought to cover it up by changing their ownership back to the original ownership that was submitted in their application to the city. This is a well-documented pattern of facts. It is all documented in the briefing that our attorney submitted to the city of Fairfield. Unfortunately, this has become a question of integrity. It matters to the city of Fairfield if someone can come before this body, violate the law, try to cover it up, and lie about it. It matters deeply. It matters to us as a local business, both as a competitor, a potential competitor to Authentic Fairfield, and also as a resident business of this community. Unfortunately, it's the situation we're faced with now. This has become a question of integrity, and we sincerely ask you to do the right thing. It's not okay for a group to lie to this body. We are citizens of Fairfield via our business. We are respectful members of this community that contribute, and we are personally feeling affronted by this pattern of deception. And lastly, just a final point I want to underscore, there was a representation in prior comments that this resolution would cost the city a substantial amount of money in union jobs. There is nothing in this resolution that precludes a fourth license from opening in the city of Fairfield, nothing at all. The city has all opportunities available to welcome a fourth cannabis retail business if you so choose. That business will hopefully not be one that lies to the city of Fairfield. I appreciate your time, and again, your patience over this six-month process, and please encourage you to do the right thing. Don't stand for lies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Alfredo Delgado, to be followed by Glenn Lovall. Lovall?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Alfredo Delgado. I'm a union representative with UFCW Local 5. I actually represent Stizzy. I do represent the location in Pacheco and Benicia as well. I also represent Embark in Fairfield and Martinez. But I am here in support of Authentic Fairfield. I do believe they supply great union jobs with great benefits. In my experience of being their representative for over two years now, it's been a pleasure with all the members, seeing them grow, and I think it'll be great for the city of Fairfield. I think you guys will be doing your city an injustice if you reject them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Glenn, to be followed by Kimberly Walsh.
Good evening, staff and council and members of the public. Thank you, everyone, for continuing the work on this issue. My name is Glenn Lovall, Executive Director of Napa-Solano Central Labor Council, AFL-CIO. We represent about 45 local unions across Solano and Napa counties. UFCW 5, the union, of course, that would represent these workers, is one of our affiliates. And so, wanted to reiterate past points of, of course, respectfully asking the council once again with gratitude for all the information and documentation that you have been going through in order to properly and thoroughly review this, that, you know, assuming with the information coming in that there is compliance or appropriate conditions, strongly supporting this project moving forward with its associated quality union jobs and tax revenue coming into the city. We're very much the anti-ostarians and believe very much in expanding local quality jobs and tax revenue ahead of any crisis, and we're also strongly supportive of any collaborations that make this a success with the community. One really refreshing thing, and this is something that I believe we noted in a previous city council meeting, are the world-class benefits and CTE vocational training associated with these career paths. That is unfortunately not the most That is unfortunately not the most common quality of industries that have come about in the last several decades, and that is a welcome development, and we want to be on that cutting edge with this community. So, thank you again for all your consideration, and, you know, thank you for reviewing this, and we look forward to the next steps.
Thank you.
Next is Kimberly Walsh, to be followed by Caitlin Myers.
Hello, honorable counsel. My name is Kimberly Walsh, and I've lived in Fairfield for about five years. I'm here tonight to support Authentic Fairfield. I've been with Stizzy for over two years. With this company, I have built valuable professional skills and have moved up through three promotions to now the general manager of Stizzy Sassoon. Along with 34 employees at the store, Stizzy provides stability. They work closely with UFCW-5 Union to keep a fair workplace for all employees, benefits provided, and an environment that promotes growth and community involvement. Stizzy works hard to support each and every community it lives in, providing community cleanups, fundraisers, coat and food drives, and much more. Stizzy also puts a lot of effort into budtender education, which is then passed to the community, promoting a safe space to learn about cannabis. We have received an overwhelming number of signatures for support from the community wanting a store in the wonderful city of Fairfield. From bringing the lowest prices and the level of community and employee involvement, it's certain that Stizzy is the right move for Fairfield. We are ready and excited to get to work on opening the Fairfield location, and will stick to the deadline. I respectfully ask you to reject the resolution and allow Authentic Fairfield to move forward and open. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Next is Caitlin Myers, to be followed by Ron Turner.
Good evening, honorable counsel. My name is Caitlin Myers, and I am the senior district manager for Stizzy NorCal. I have worked with Stizzy for three years now, and I directly oversee the Sassoon, Pacheco, El Cerrito, and Santa Rosa locations. We have about 75 unionized employees amongst those locations, and I love every day of it. I'm here tonight to support Authentic Fairfield. Holding a leadership in this company, I have seen the countless benefits of having a Stizzy store in the community, mainly the employment opportunities that the company brings. On any given day in Sassoon, we receive anywhere from two to five resumes from hopeful applicants. If there aren't any open positions, people often say, "I'll travel to Benicia, I'll travel to Pacheco for any open jobs." We often hear, "I just wish you had a Fairfield location." Not only does Stizzy aim to hire veterans and locals, the company also believes in personal growth and promoting from within. We believe in training employees from the ground up and building them into higher-level positions, which grants more opportunities for those who may not have college degrees or higher education. Because of this philosophy, I've had the great honor of approving 25 internal promotions during my three years with Stizzy. So lack of experience will not hold you back in this company so long as you prove to be a hard worker and a fast learner. That's probably my favorite thing about Stizzy, is that anyone can seize the opportunity and turn the job into a real career. Allowing Authentic Fairfield to open will greatly benefit the city and will have a positive impact on the community by creating a new source of employment for community members to build their lifelong careers. Authentic understands their deadline to open by the end of the year, and they have come this far. I respectfully ask for you to reject the resolution and allow Authentic Fairfield to move forward and open, as it would be a benefit to all those who are employed by the company and to all those who are loyal customers. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next is Ron Turner, to be followed by Tox Sato.
Good evening, Mayor Moy and fellow council members. I would like to take this, I would like to go back to 1977 when I took the oath of office, when I became a proud city of Fairfield police officer. The oath of office is summarized in the truth, honesty, loyalty, and integrity, and I owe that to Bigel Wilson, who was the city manager there, and the lessons I learned from him. Right behind you is O'Glory. It's posted behind you, the flag that, the flag of the United States of America. All gave some, and some gave all for that flag. And as we all know, we've lost, one of my fellow officers, Art Coach, protecting this flag that's behind all of us. Today, I tend this, today I attended the city council award ceremony and recognized the hard work integrity and the rule of law that was presented by recognizing all of those city, loyal city employees. Part of our rule of law is our due process system, and when that, when those facts are balanced with the rule of law, we are guided to apply these rules across the board equally. I will close with O'Glory, who still stands strong in the face of adversity, but we are guided by the rule of law, and I believe that when we have a process, that process is in place for a reason, and that we're all bound by those, those rules that we set up and those agreements that we made during the initial process, and like to hold everyone accountable to those, to that process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Tox Sato, to be followed by Brian Mitchell.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I first want to address the comment made by the Embark employee accusing us of lying to the council. I want to assure you that that's never happened. I've said, we've said from the start, there's not been any ownership changes, but we do admit that we have over 200 licenses with the DCC, and those changes were made in error when we had some restructuring. Those changes should not have been made to Authentic Fairfield. I next want to reiterate our commitment to being open the next six months. I think that's what started this whole issue, and we're, we believe this store could be our flagship store in Northern California. Our store in Sassoon City does $14 million a year, and this store is clearly a better location. So I clearly believe that this could be our flagship store in Northern California. I want to reiterate what our attorney Nicole mentioned about the best interest of the city. I mentioned that I stand by our guarantee that we could do $750,000 in cannabis tax revenue our first year. I believe we could do better than that, but I want to stand by that guarantee because that will essentially double the cannabis tax revenue that the city received last year. I also want to reiterate that what some of our employees have mentioned about our union jobs. We're very proud of the fact that we were named the Player of the Year by the Napa-Sassoon Labor Council, and we're very proud of the fact that we pay actually wages between $25 to $30 an hour when you count our tips. So in closing, I would just like to request an opportunity to be open. The only people that I've heard today against this opening are competitors. I've heard, we've had 200 people sign petitions to let us open our store, and we've heard all our employees and all our labor partners, and I simply ask for an opportunity to open the store. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Brian Mitchell.
Oh, you don't have anything to add? Okay. Thank you.
Did anyone else wish to speak? Okay. And there are no hands raised online.
Just that one person's there?
We have one person online, but no, no hands are raised.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. City Attorney?
So, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I want to read you what the process is for going into closed session. I want to reiterate that this is your decision. As your council, I am advising that I think it's wise to go into closed session. I don't think it'll take very long. Just to advise you, under the attorney-client privilege, what the potential ramifications are for what I heard Ms. Phyllis indicate as a potential settlement agreement. So, under Government Code 54956.9 subsection G, city council can go into closed section, but the legislative body of the local agency needs to make that determination. So I would ask if, after I finish this, that there be a motion and a second and a majority vote to go into closed session. And at the time of going into closed session, the local agency shall state on the agenda or publicly announce the paragraph of subdivision D that authorizes the closed session. I'm going to recommend, if you want to make this motion, that you make a motion to go into closed session, and the public pronouncement of that reason under 54956.9 subsection D is subsection two, where a point has been reached where, in the opinion of the local agency, the legislative body of the local agency, or on the advice of its legal counsel, based on existing facts and circumstances, there's a significant exposure to litigation against the local agency. Under subsection E4, existing facts and circumstances shall consist of one of the following, and in this case, it's a statement made by a person in an open and public meeting threatening litigation on a specific matter within the responsibility of the legislative body. Now, in this matter, Authentic, or Stizzy, also known as Authentic, has made previous threats of litigation if this council were to pull their permit, and that has been made previously, both in writing and here at previous, or during the course of this hearing that's been continued. And what we've heard today is a potential settlement offer to obviate that potential, the potential litigation, and that's what I need to advise this council on, under the attorney-client privilege. So it's my advice that we go into closed session for the very limited purpose of allowing ourselves to have that attorney-client privilege to advise you as to the ramifications of that, which I believe is necessary for you to make a full and fair decision if you choose to go forward in making a decision on this matter. So that's my very long-winded way of saying, I think we should go into closed session. And Madam Mayor, if you want to ask for a motion and a second to vote on that reason to go in closed session, if it passes by a majority vote, so you need three votes to do it, then I think the easiest thing would be for us to stay here and clear the room and turn off all the microphones.
Yes.
Our council does have his hand raised.
Oh, that is your counsel? That's what I was wondering.
Oh, there is someone online, but there's no hand raised.
He says he's ready to stand up.
Oh, okay.
I need to ask a quick question, just in your ear.
Sure.
Oh, okay.
-counsel, that's online.
Jake, could you bring the person online?
Lawrence, you have two minutes.
I'm here, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name, please?
Yeah, Lawrence Conlon. I represent Embark. I've had my hand raised since Ms. Phyllis began speaking, just for the record.
Sir, your time is going.
Yeah, that's okay. I just wanted to make that clear so you understand. Embark's position is, and we believe the city's position should be, that Authentic's permit should be revoked as the city council long ago proposed. There's two reasons for this. The first is that Authentic has violated the law by changing ownership without permission. This is not a discretionary decision by the city council to revoke this permit. The second reason is that one of Embark, one, excuse me, one of Authentic's owners is legally disqualified from being an owner. That also is not a discretionary decision for the city. On point one, Authentic has misrepresented its ownership and its changes time and time again. If you, if the city council reviews the letter I sent in on May 2nd, you'll see a timeline that was attached. It shows a detailed succession of events where Authentic changed its ownership without permission in August of 2021. It changed its ownership again without permission in October of 2021. It changed its ownership again in January 2023. It did so again in April of 2024. It finally did so again earlier this year, late 2024. The problem with what Fairfield, with what Authentic Fairfield is doing is it lacks transparency in its dealings with the city. Now, what we hear is two different stories. One, we didn't change ownership, and then you hear Mr. Sato stand up and say, "Oh, we did, but it was a mistake, and we did it across the board with all of our locations." This is not the kind of business the city should be dealing with. This is not the kind of business the community should be dealing with. Now, what Authentic wants to do is ask you to look past these ownership changes, and it wants to buy its way into a license. If I were on the city council, I'd be very concerned that this sounds not like a settlement offer, but like bribery. Authentic has not dealt honestly, and based on its history, it's not going to deal honestly with the city going forward. This is not something that can be cured. Point two, equally important, even if the city were willing to look past this total lack of transparency and violations of the rule of law, what the city cannot do is grant a license to an entity that has one of its principal owners, an individual by the name of Tony Wang.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you consider my, my letters and my advocacy tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And I did get one more card from Cyrus, not sure how to say the last name.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for the time, and I just would like to counter Mr. Conlon's comments right there. I'd like to iterate that Tony Wang, Brian Mitchell, and Tox Sato, and all our owners, all three owners on our license here, they're on multiple cannabis licenses in, both by DCC and at local levels, and they are qualified and able to own and operate cannabis licenses. So, I, I, I just, it's a little alarming that Mr. Conlon would say that.
Thank you.
Did anyone else wish to speak?
You got one minute.
Yeah, and she's just, her clients have been accused of something, and she's here defending something. They're just making accusations. I'm going to give her a minute.
Thank you. I'll be very brief. My client has committed no crime. There is no attempt at bribery. This is a public session where we are allowed to make settlement offers, as there is no commission of a crime there, nor have any of the members, James, Kim, Brian Mitchell, or Tony Wang, have they ever done anything to disqualify themselves from holding licenses. The DCC knows about this. DCC hasn't taken any action. Mr. Wang literally holds six licenses in the state. What they are saying makes no sense, nor is it on the agenda, so there's, it's not fair for us to get sandbagged again. Six months of this. I know it's a distraction to counsel. I respectfully suggest that enough is enough. Please allow us to start generating revenue for your city. We are willing to commit $750,000 in our first year regardless of performance at a minimum. I think that's an excellent offer. I'm happy to address any questions, and I thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to put in a card, Jim?
She said the first year. I was under the impression it's $750,000, every year, and she just said her first year. So is it, is it true, or is it just one year?
I'm happy to clarify.
Okay.
The $750,000 was for the first year. That was for it. If the city wants to make a counter, we're happy to address it. That was what the offer is. That's what I'm authorized to make. I expect that this store, if it does better than what's going on in Sassoon City, you'll get more than that, year after year, right? We're projecting $800,000 to $1 million. What we're saying is, regardless of performance, regardless of getting up and running, in the first year, you are guaranteed to get 701-
Doug's ready to go home. You can go.
We made the motion.
Do you want?
We made the motion.
Do you want?
You made, you made the motion, and they are second. Okay, thanks. Thanks.
Okay, so Madam Mayor, we're back in open session. Members of the public are back, and I have nothing to report at a closed session.
Thank you. Does anybody have a motion?
I want to clarify that I'm voting for what I want to vote for.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead and take your mic.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make sure that I'm very clear what we're voting for. So, could you restate? Could you state it?
Yes.
Thank you.
So currently before the council is Resolution Number 2025-37 rescinding the approved issuance of a commercial cannabis retail business permit to Authentic Fairfield LLC. So, if the standard procedure is if a council member makes a motion to approve Resolution 2025-37, a yes vote would mean that you're voting to rescind the approved issuance of a commercial cannabis retail business permit to Authentic Fairfield LLC. A no vote would mean that you are not voting to rescind, which means you would allow Authentic to keep their permit. I recommend that whoever makes the motion just make the motion to approve because you could alternatively make a motion not to approve it, but you're all not used to voting that way. And so then the yes and no votes flip. You get what I'm saying?
You're confused.
Yes, just, I would say just somebody make a motion, no matter how you're thinking about voting, just make a motion to approve it, right? And then we get a second, and then whoever votes yes is moving, is, a yes vote means you're rescinding the permit, a no vote means you're letting them keep the preliminary approval.
Can't we just, if we want to, turn the resolution around?
I think it's easier this way. You can do whatever you want, though, however you want to do it.
Councilwoman Williams, just say what you want, and that's what we'll vote on, what you want to do.
I would like to...
Your mic on?
I would like to turn on my mic. I would like, I am a no vote. I do not want to rescind the permit. I want them to have it until December 1st.
Okay.
And perform.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm a no.
Okay.
So I actually think this is a good idea, Madam Mayor. Why don't you have, why don't we have everyone go down and state how they are voting? She set the precedent saying no means she wants them to keep it.
Okay, then just go ahead.
Then we will, we will memorialize it with a formal motion, second, and a vote, and everyone will just vote.
Okay. Councilwoman Doug, you're up.
I vote to rescind.
Okay. Councilwoman Panduro.
I also vote to rescind.
Okay.
And I vote not to rescind.
So then, Madam Mayor, just for procedural sakes, I'd ask for someone to make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-37, get a second, and then council members Moy and Williams have indicated that they will vote no, and council members Carr and Panduro will indicate they vote yes, and I'll just do a roll call real quick, just to memorialize.
Okay, so you guys can make a motion, one of you two.
I'll make the motion to rescind. Want me to read the whole thing?
No.
Okay.
That's fine. Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Councilmember Williams?
No.
Sorry. Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
Councilmember Panduro?
Yes.
Mayor Moy?
No.
That vote is two-two, tie, under the rules of procedure, no action is taken on this item.
So, tell us what that means for Authentic or...
It means they go back to the status quo where they were before this item was brought before the council, meaning that their preliminary license or preliminary approval stays.
It stays. And I would ask that their council talk to our council about negotiations. You will promise to do that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. This meeting is adjourned, thank God. Six months of hell, let's go.